Okay, I'm gonna give the 30-second warning. If you could all find your seats, please. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gilbert Council Meeting for January 24th, 2023. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask the Vice Mayor to please do the presentation of Student Citizen of the Month Awards.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we'll have the presentation up here. I'm Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke, and it's my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. The recipients were nominated by their teacher and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hard-working students, but to also thank all the teachers and school administrators in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. At this time, we're going to begin our Student Citizen of the Month presentation. Please enjoy. For those of you who are receiving an award tonight, a certificate and packet will be delivered to your school. And we're gonna begin with our elementary schools. And we're going to do this in this fashion this time. Mayor, do we know if we're gonna be having them come back anytime soon?
That's a great question. I've had several people ask me. I think we would like to finish out this school year with doing this virtually, but then I think we'd like to start next school year by bringing people back in person.
Great. We always miss seeing those students and their parents. They're so proud that they've been nominated and recognized today. So I will begin with Ashland Ranch Elementary, Penelope Brown, Bridges Elementary, Kate Warwa, Burke Elementary, Max Honani, Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Danielle Cortez, Chandler Traditional Academy, Freedom Campus, Anastasia Hart, Chaparral Elementary, Sawyer Mays, Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Easton Rabicoff, Christ Greenfield School, Anthony Gomez, Edger Prize School, Madeline Appila, Gateway Point Elementary, Liberty Garvin, Higley Traditional Academy, Xavier Coleman, Islands Elementary, Carson Tyler, Mesquite Elementary, Jackson Kedemora, Oak Tree Elementary, Emilio Agari, Patterson Elementary, Sahana Cody Meila, Pioneer Elementary, Cole Damagnani, Playa del Rey Elementary, Sophie Graham, Quartz Hill Elementary, Brynlin Fraser, Riggs Elementary, Madison Maticek, Santana Elementary, Eva Tenti, Settlers Point, Beatrice Sanchez Nunez, Spectrum Elementary, Benjamin Bustamante, Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Sukie Canau, Weinberg Gifted Academy, Michael Herndon. And now we're going to honor our junior high and high school students. American Leadership Academy, Avery Miller Fabregas? I apologize, I'm trying really hard. Thank you. Campo Verde High School, Sadie Bolton, Canyon Valley High School, Sophia Ferraro, Cooley Middle School, Sadie Shepada, Gilbert Classical Academy, Evelyn Skilly, Gilbert High School, Jackson J.D. Cutilla, Greenfield Junior High, Wyatt Packer, Leading Edge Academy, Early College, Alexander Copeland, Leading Edge Academy Junior High, Samantha Province, Mesquite High School, Meredith Allen, Mesquite Junior High, Adrian Pacheco, South Valley Junior High, Camille Ricks. And I think that's it. Congratulations.
Vice Mayor, that is not easy. I've done it. It is not easy to do. Thank you. Thank everybody for their patience. But I want to tell one story before we move forward. Penelope Brown was one of the first names that the Vice Mayor listed. And we got an email. Penelope's great-great-grandfather, Elvin Lines, was the first graduate of the first graduating class of Gilbert High School, along with his sister Myrtle Lines. Elvin Lines' father, George Willis Lines, also known as GW Lines, was one of the first settlers here in Gilbert. He was one of the original town council members. He was also the president of the Gilbert Board of Education. So her great-great-grandfather, Elvin, and great-great-grandpa, GW Lines, which is just amazing. And now she's being honored as one of our Students of the Month. So that's fun town history, I think. And I talk about, as big as Gilbert gets, as small as it stays. And I think that's proof right there. So congratulations to everybody. Great family lineage here in Gilbert, too. Thanks, Vice Mayor. That was great.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I have Elder John, and now it's my turn, Kamau, from the Kenya Presbyterian Church of Arizona, here to lead us in the invocation. And I apologize if I messed up your name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the Vice Mayor, and all others who assist our mayor in Gilbert. Allow me this opportunity to thank God for each one of us here. Lord God Almighty, we humble ourselves before the throne of mercy this evening to present to your servants who have chosen to guide our beautiful city into greater heights. We thank you for Mayor Bridgette and all those who assist her. We thank you for all her subjects who are willing to support her to build a beautiful city of Gilbert. This evening, King of all glory, I pray that you continue blessing them with the wisdom they need and the strength, Father, and good health. We thank you that they have chosen to put you first. Oh, God, we pray that you put them first, too. We thank you that even in the actions we witness them, recognizing the young ones, our children, Father. And we pray that you continue to bless them and cover them with your beautiful, mighty hand, oh, God. We thank you, Father, as we invite you in this meeting. May it be a beautiful meeting, dear Lord, that you will help this city now and in the future. For this, we pray and trust in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out and offering an invocation this evening. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Girl Scout Daisy Troop, 3946. If I could ask these girls to please come down to the front? And if everyone would please stand. Thank you, ladies. I had a wonderful time touring you around Town Hall this afternoon. Hope you enjoyed yourself. And thank you for coming out to the Gilbert Town Council Meeting. Bye, moms. Thank you very much. It was nice to meet all of you.
They told me they gave you some cookies. You're supposed to share with us.
Oh, do I have to? They gave me three boxes of Girl Scout cookies, different kinds, too. Bye. I would be happy to share those. Next, I will ask our Town Clerk Herrera to please do the roll call.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I would like to, I'm gonna change the order of the agenda this evening. And we're gonna move the mayor's comments up from the end of the agenda to the start of the agenda because I just want to say a few words. Welcome back to our council chambers. I'm sure there will be bugs to work out, but we will get there. Our team has been working diligently to make sure we are all trained. And a couple of boards and commissions have already met in this space. So we're excited to see how our first official meeting goes this evening. I want to officially welcome our new council members. I know people believe you run for Town Council and it's two meetings a month and that's it. But just tonight, we have a study session, a regular meeting, and an executive session scheduled. These new council members and our returning members have already done a two-day retreat in December, two full days of orientation together. And the new members have had at least three full days of training with the team. Mayor and council has 48 different organizations and assignments that we serve on or are liaisons to. I take about 19 of those assignments, and the rest are split up between these great council members who have all stepped up to fill those assignments. So I wanted to say thank you very much for everybody and all your work so far and look forward to serving together, at least over the next couple of years. Now on to some special community congratulations. And I think I might have some actual slides for these. One, let's see who you pop up first, and I'll do that one. This one is, I want to congratulate the Highland High Hawkettes Palm Team on their win as the 2022-2023 Division One Palm State Champions. Let's give these girls a big round of applause. I think it's so important to be able to have these great celebrations when we can and congratulate these awesome kids that we have living in our community. The other one that I would like to say a very big congratulations to is Julia Crossley, a sixth grader at Mesquite Elementary School who was announced as the Good Morning America Super Bowl Kid Correspondent. Way to go, Julia. We'd love to have her at a council meeting following the Super Bowl to hear about her experience. And since she's a student correspondent, I expect her to come up and speak to us. So. And then this afternoon, I received an email that a student at Perry High School, Joshua Shank, was named a finalist in this year's Regeneron Science Talent Search, the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high school seniors, which is founded and produced by the Society of Science. I didn't even know there was such a thing. This year, the 40 finalists hail from 34 schools in 14 states, and they were chosen from a pool of over 1,900 highly qualified applicants, all of whom completed an original research project and extensive application process. Joshua and his fellow finalists will participate in a week-long competition from March 9th to March 15th. While they will undergo a rigorous judging process and compete for more than $1.8 million in awards, including a top prize of $250,000. The top 10 Regeneron Science Talent Search 2023 winners will be announced during a live-streamed award ceremony on March 14th. And I have to say, wow. Way to go, Joshua. Way to represent Perry High School and the town of Gilbert and making it this far. And good luck during that competition. I want to thank our Daisy Troop also for leading the pledge this evening. And just one more shout-out. The Arizona City Management Association, also known as the ACMA, is a professional organization that provides training, career development, and best practice, sharing opportunities for city managers, assistant city managers, and those seeking to get into city management. Later this week at this year's conference, our own town manager, Patrick Baner, will be sworn in as president of ACMA for the upcoming year. Congratulations, Patrick. And now I will move on to presentations and proclamations. We have one presentation this evening, and that will be by Kelly Fost, our Budget Director, on the presentation of the 2022 Gilbert Benchmark Report. Hi, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm glad to be with you this evening. We do have our Gilbert Benchmark Report. And kudos to Janice Hart. She is the analyst who works on all of this information and puts it together. And I just get to be the face to bring it to you tonight. So every two years, Gilbert does a benchmark report where we compare our town in a lot of different areas to peer communities across the nation and within our own community here. So there are 75 benchmarks in the report. Again, there are eight major functional areas and 24 different divisions in the town that are represented within the report. We compare with 41 other municipalities across 13 different states. So it's very comprehensive, a lot of information in the report. I'm just gonna present a couple of highlights for you this evening. One of them is the share of workers in STEM and STEM-related occupations. So on the bottom, we have the results from the report two years ago. And then on the top, the report results most recently. So we actually increased from 13.5% to 13.6%. So we have done better. And most of our peer communities also have increased their share of STEM-related jobs. If we look at the vacancy rate for commercial properties, the vacancy rate did go up a little bit, from 8.6 to 9.1. But that is really common across the board. This is during the COVID time, and there were some additional vacancies. But Gilbert increased only slightly in comparison to some of the other communities. So we fared really well in this area. Next, we've got the percent of utility customers who receive statements electronically. And we did increase from 29% to 35%, which was really great. Some of our other communities also saw some increases. And then Tempe and Plano, Texas have some work to do. But we wish them luck. The number of sworn officers per thousand residents, we increased. So we have 1.09 sworn officers per thousand residents. We're still on the low end, but we have done some investment into our sworn officers and area to help improve that so that we have the resources we need. On average fire response times for 90% of the calls, the time to respond did increase slightly, from 4 minutes 44 seconds to 5 minutes. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. Part of that is because during the COVID period, there was additional protective equipment that needed to be put on. So it increased response times. And you can even see that in some of the other communities, that they also saw a bit of increase during this period of time as well. So it's helpful to see, kind of, is it just us? Or is it happening kind of broadly? The next one is surface versus groundwater usage. So the dark shaded part is the surface water. That would be water that comes in on canals, and it's a rechargeable, renewable resource. And then the light-colored is the groundwater. So water we get out of wells that comes from the aquifer in the ground. And that one is not as rechargeable. So we want to, our target is to have 85% come from the surface water and 15% from the groundwater. And we haven't, we lost a little bit of ground in this area. We know that with our North Water Treatment Plant, that the new technology will help us to be able to take more advantage of the groundwater than we currently are able to do. So it will be interesting to see this statistic over the next couple of years as we get the North Water Treatment Plant up and going. This is one of the areas that we watch. And the last one, we have average annual trash weight per household. Gilbert residents make a lot of trash per household. We are the number one on this area. And we did grow in the last two years by about 100 pounds of trash per household per year, which is a lot of growth. But both Tempe and even Plano, Texas grew by about 500 pounds of trash per household per year. So we didn't grow as much as other communities, but it's definitely a trend that we would like to see reversing as the trash bill, they're paying the same amount per month, but more trash means we need to pay more tipping fees when we take that to the landfills. So something we need to watch and look at and keep track of. That's just a couple of highlights from our benchmark report. We take this information, the departments look at it. It helps us in our decision-making and looking at what resources we might need or what we might be able to do better in the future. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly? Councilmember Torgerson?
How does Scottsdale have such little trash? I realize you're looking at COVID and having much trash, but that's stunning to see how low that is.
Yeah. Some of that might be if they have seasonal people who are only there for part of the year. So if you average the trash they produce for the months that they are there, over 12, it would be lower. Or if they had some smaller household sizes, if they had more retirees with one or two people per household, that could make a difference.
And Councilmember Kaprowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I guess my question is kind of in line with the trash as well. Do you think that it might be because of some of the services we provide, such as the roll-off dumpsters, that gets factored into that calculation but may not be offered in other communities?
That's a really good question. That statistic, that particular metric, is only based off the residential trash. It doesn't include the bulk trash or any of the roll-off containers. So just what you put out in your blackened recycle bins.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's continue to talk about trash, then. Does that include recyclable, or is that just trash, trash, trash?
I don't believe it includes recyclable. I can get with our expert who put the statistic together and email that to you.
Good, thank you.
She needs to phone a friend for trash talk. Any other comments or questions? Kelly, great job. Thank you. You sent us the full report via email, too. We appreciate you doing the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, nice to see you. Next, we will move to communications from citizens, and I will pass that over to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read a statement about the protocol for communications from citizens. And then we will call you down one at a time. You will have three minutes. And can you remind me, the clock will be up on the screen so that you will be able to see that when you're speaking? So each person will have three minutes. The Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request-to-speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bid bin prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items. At the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda, per a state statute. I'd read it, but you probably won't remember the number. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the public podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. Your comments should be directed to the council, not the audience. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds at the direction, discretion of the mayor for ending a speaker's time at the podium. So saying all that, I'd like you to know that we are looking at different options as we move forward to make sure that we hear from you, and we'll be talking about that more later. But in the meantime, we're gonna, I'll call a name and then I'll mention who's on deck for the next one because I don't think we need to do three since we're not so far to go. So first up is Dorleese Liddell. Dorleese, just come on forward, and we'll get the microphone on for you. Just state your name and town or residence.
Good evening. My name's Dorleese Machado Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to speak tonight on the study session because I can't speak during a study session. I would ask the council to respectfully place that on an agenda item so that members of the public can speak during study sessions. I think it's a great opportunity to hear what the public has to say prior to it going to council. And regarding the study session and the park that we were just talking about, I have some concerns. Some of my concerns are safety. And when we're talking about the food trucks and the alley, I look at circulation. One of my concerns is there isn't the appropriate circulation in that area of the park, meaning the alley. The alley is closed off. And I think that should be considered in the planning stages of the park itself. The alley has an easement on it. And I think that it is a needed and necessary pass-through for emergency vehicles. If you're going to house so many people and have special events, you do need to have a lot of outs. So that's one of my concerns. My next concern is noise mitigation. I think that's one thing that, we talk about water, but I think noise mitigation is something that needs to be considered. We'll have competition through the food trucks in addition to the residents who live in the area. And at this time, we hear the noise, which is fine. But if you're going to have concerts and large events, that will impact. When I looked at the renderings, I saw this really, this overpass. It looked like a vehicle overpass. I'm very concerned. If we see it, we may think it, and it may become. I never want to see an overpass leading into a residential neighborhood. I hope that it still remains a pedestrian and will always remain a pedestrian, I think for the safety of everyone. Park hours, I think that that's going to be an issue. And I hope that you look at that regarding what the park hours actually are and consider that. So in saying that, I never thought that I would hear that that park is an aging park when it was built in 2008. I think that we need to consider what we're doing for the future because the more technology we place in it, it's going to be outdated. People want to see and enjoy a park. In regards to birds, I think, yeah. But I also think maybe you should identify trees. It would be given a nice opportunity for people to learn about trees. Those are my concerns. My major concern is safety and that alley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liddell. And I apologize. Echo Love, you're up next. And after Ms. Love is Teresa Welker.
Hi, hello. My name is Echo Love, and I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm following up with you from an interaction that occurred at the Town Council Meeting back on December 13th. If it is helpful for your recall, I am the resident who was under the impression that I'd be given 10 minutes to speak, but then at the podium, there was a correction, and I was only given three minutes. I also emailed town staff on January 10th regarding this issue, but I did not receive a reply. Thus, I wanted to follow up using this platform as well. At the December 13th meeting, I spoke regarding the Madera Z2212 project. During that meeting, I stated that the developer had failed the traffic study since that was the guidance that I had been given by town staff prior to the council meeting. After I finished speaking, Vice Mary Entes followed up with the developer and asked if he knew what the individual was speaking about when she said the traffic study had failed. The developer then replied and stated that he did not know what I was speaking about and that the concerns provided were related to parking only, and there were no traffic concerns. That was a very surprising and concerning statement to me since it was in contrast with what I had been told by staff. I followed up with Noah Schumert, Planner 2, from Planning and Zoing after the meeting. And he stated that the report did fail in the sense that it had failed the first review within the active design case. He stated that there was a good deal of work that needed to be done on the traffic management side of the site in addition to the parking concerns. Mr. Schumert then went on to explain to me that there were four major traffic issues related to queuing, arterial distancing, level of service values, and Higley and service values, and Higley and Ray Road improvements. Because the traffic study had already been returned to the developer for review and the developer had a meeting with town staff the following Monday to address these traffic concerns, I found it very concerning that he was able to state to the council that there were no traffic concerns. All of this to say that I feel like his statements represented a significant impropriety as it was relevant to the town council, the vote that followed immediately after that. I was also surprised that town staff, neither Eva Cutro in planning nor the traffic department, who are said to be standing by, gave comment or clarification prior to the vote. Thus, I come to you today asking for, I guess, guidance and information on how information presented to you by the developers live at these meetings is verified for accuracy because the votes do occur right then. What is to prevent a developer from giving anyone false information deliberately, not deliberately, or just misconstrued that then results in a vote in their favor versus one that's given to the town? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Appreciate it. Teresa Welker. And then after Teresa will be, it looks like McDavid Dobson. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Welker. I'm a Gilbert resident and I'm here tonight with my neighbors to talk about the structure on, at 2711 East Melrose Street. We have lived on Melrose Street for 13 years and we've lived in Gilbert for 23 years. A few years ago, a repairman came to my door and when I opened the door, the first thing he said was, "Do you realize how blessed you are to live in this neighborhood?" As soon as I pulled off of Germaine Road and into your neighborhood, I just felt so relaxed. It's so peaceful here. It's a wonderful neighborhood. And I completely agreed with him. As you turn off of Germaine, there's a tree-lined street with beautiful trees. You turn on Melrose Street and there's a row of houses with acre lots, big front yards, spacious, generous space in between homes to give you that relaxed, open feeling that we all love. And at the end of the street is a cul-de-sac, ensuring that our street is quiet and for residential use. Kids have the security to walk across the street, be outside, and we're so grateful to have this beautiful neighborhood to live in. But now, things have changed a little bit on Melrose Street. When you turn that corner down the street, there's a three-story, multi-unit detached standalone building in the front yard at the end of the cul-de-sac. And now, when people come to my door, they say, "Why is someone building a house in their front yard? And how was this ever approved?" We've talked to many town employees that were shocked and surprised when we brought up this project. Some promised to get to the bottom of it. Others said that it shouldn't have been permitted. I urge you to take another look at this. I urge you to look at the plans if you haven't seen them and to look at the pictures that we have presented to the town council. But better yet, pictures don't really do it justice. We would appreciate it if you would come to our neighborhood, drive down the tree-lined street and turn onto Melrose Street, look at the beautiful homes and the spacious lots, and then pull up to this multi-story, multi-unit detached building with two party decks on top in the front yard of the house on the cul-de-sac. And ask yourself if you would want this in your neighborhood and if it should have been approved in ours. I appreciate your time and I'm, we're here to ask you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welker. McDavid Dobson. And after that will be Ernest Langdon.
Good evening. My name is McDavid Dobson, or David. I live at 2649 East Claxton in the Poco Bueno Ranch neighborhood with the Welkers. I am one street over on Claxton. When I saw what was going on on Melrose, I was somewhat taken aback. My family has more than a little bit of history in Gilbert. Our farming operation was right across the street from Joe Johnson's epicenter. I, I know Joe personally. We basically grew up together. I worked very closely with the town 20 years ago to help part of the Golden Triangle or the Gateway Character Area with names like Linda Edwards and Jerry Swanson and I think maybe even a few people on the council, or maybe even the mayor. These people that we worked with back then had a standard and a quality about them when it came to planning and zoning. There was a structure about it. And when you see what's going on on Melrose and to mirror or to echo what Teresa just said, everybody's shocked, to say the least. How do you approve something in somebody's front yard that's like this? Especially when every other home going down the street has a front door that faces due north. And you approve a structure that doesn't have a front door, matter of fact, it's got four or five entrances, spiral staircases, party decks. It doesn't conform. There is no way, if I were to have that exact same structure, try to be approved on my property and somebody like Linda Edwards was in charge of P&amp;Z, would I ever, ever have gotten that approved? It's just too bad. When I feel like the neighborhood that I live in, the town that I've been in all of my life, and we have this one little speck where it seems like so much is being done to let it happen and just not much is being done to see what we can do to pause or stop or look at it in a different light. I mean, we've talked with people in the town. We've tried to be open with our communication and our frustration. And it just seems like there are more people willing to try and make it happen than help us to see if we can mitigate it or make sure it doesn't happen. And not only not happen here in my neighborhood, but though it doesn't happen again, the precedence that it sets in HOA, or I'm sorry, non-HOA neighborhoods that are going to allow this kind of development, especially if the town is going to let it happen as well, is just chaotic to me. It's just, there's not a lot of structure involved with it. It scares me, to be quite honest with you. I hope it doesn't come to this, but if legal action is necessary, I'd be more than willing to join with my neighbors and make sure that we can get this stopped. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. We have Ernest Langdon. And after Ernest will be Diane West.
I'm Ernest Langdon. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I appreciate you guys giving me the time to talk to you. I'm going to say, I'm going to try to summarize this the best that I can. This is a structure that's being built at the end of my street. When I take a right down at the end of my street now, there is a structure that is two stories taller than anything else on the street. It's in their front yard, all right? It doesn't meet code. And the interesting thing is, when this was pursued by the people in the neighborhood and they showed up to a meeting here at the town, they changed it from a guest quarters, which was what it was approved as, denied three times previously, then approved as a guest quarters, and now all of a sudden, it is a home extension. This is not a home extension. This is an apartment building. Why do we know it's an apartment building? Why do we know where they're going to rent it out? It has multiple entrances. It has wiring and plumbing for multiple kitchens and washer and dryer units. I don't know about you guys, but I don't need three separate kitchens and three separate washer and dryer units in my home extension. The owners of this property have seven other rental properties in the state. They have rented their own home out for parties in our neighborhood that have gotten well out of hand. The details are grotesque. This is something that should have never happened. And why it got approved and then why on that morning of that meeting it got changed, I have no idea. It was built on top of easements that belonged to the town of Gilbert and to SRP. A cease and desist order was put in place and then a couple of weeks later, you guys look, eh, we don't really care about that. It doesn't make sense for that to be happening. No logical reason behind it. I am encouraging you, begging you to do the right thing here. Shut this thing down. It makes no sense. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood and it, it's probably not legal. We will pursue legal action if we have to. Legal action means discovery and discovery means all the documents and communications come out and then the truth will come out. And I think that's the part we should all be concerned about. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Langdon. Next, Diane West. And following Diane is Teri Natty.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson and councilmen and women. My name is Diane West and I am a, one daughter of my parents who live in Poco Bueno. They live right next door to the house in question and that addresses 2711 Melrose Street. They're 22, they are 22-year residents in this, in this neighborhood. As it's been said, it's a quiet neighborhood with a very tight community of families. Within, I would say about 10 years, the neighbors started renting their home out. There have been multiple parties that have turned into disastrous situations. And now, we have a structure, a three lower-level basement, two stories, two huge decks that go above that structure in the front yard of their home. Clearly, we can make speculation about it, but rather than speculate what might happen or not happen in that structure, I think we need to just go back to the basics, which is, how did this ever, how was this structure ever approved? I love, Mayor Peterson, that you said, "Gilbert, as big as it gets and as small as it stays." I love that saying and it captured my heart immediately because that is our community. That is Poco Bueno. There is certainty in that community. There is certainty that I know that my aging parents will be cared for by these amazing neighbors. These amazing neighbors can be assured that my family will help care for their children and families when in need. There's something about living in certainty. And the uncertainty that has been created by one family with one huge structure is alarming. I ask you, I drove here 4.8 miles to come to this meeting. I ask each of you to drive 4.8 miles. I don't want you to look at it from aerial photographs. I don't want you to look at a sight map. Those will help be supportive in the future. I need you to get in your cars and drive 4.8 miles and with certainty, I'm going to go back to that word, with certainty, I hope I leave here tonight knowing that you will, each of you, drive 4.8 miles to Poco Bueno and see it for yourself. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next, we have Teri Natty. And following Teri will be Chris Welker.
Hi, everybody. My name is Teri Natty. I live in a county island within the Gilbert Planning Area. And I love the new digs and welcome to the new faces. I received this book from someone who is no longer on council, didn't need it anymore. So this is part of the packet that was given to council for the 2022 Transportation Master Plan. This is Town of Gilbert Street Typologies. I don't know how old it is, but I'm assuming it's circa 2022. On page 31, it talks about minor arterials. Ocatillo Road is a minor arterial and it has the standards which your engineer, Mr. David Valmiato, wants to hold Ocatillo to, which is great. But if you look, there's five different kinds of minor arterial roads. There's recreation open space. There is residential, which I think is what we are. There's Neighborhood Activity Center. There's Regional Activity Center. And there's the Heritage Center. In each one of these, it has key characteristics and design elements and everything. And each one of the minor arterial roads, each of the five, say that the right-of-way can be 110 to 130 feet. I've been asking you to keep Ocatillo at 110 feet, 55 feet on each side. All five of your minor arterial roads say that that is okay. It also says that lanes can be 10 to 11 foot. They don't have to be 11 foot. They can be 10 foot. It says that bike paths should be six foot, but they can also be five. They can also be seven. There's room for change. If you all pull this project out of the bundle that you approved it as, we can stop the nonsense of the lawyers. We don't have to pay lawyers to do this. You guys have it in your own documents. I don't understand why this is a thing. Please pull it back. Please pull your project back to 55 feet on each side. It's within your own limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Natty. Next, we have Chris Welker. And following Chris will be Amy Langdon.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and members of the town council. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly address you and thank you for your service. My name is Chris Welker. I've been a civil litigation attorney for 23 years and a resident of Gilbert for 23 years. And I'm here tonight speaking as a resident of Gilbert, specifically a resident of a home on Melrose Street. I'll try not to duplicate what's already been said and value your time, but I do think a few points are worth reiterating. This project that we've been discussing in the cul-de-sac of Melrose Street, again, is built in the front yard, is being built in the front yard. It's still early in the construction stages, though it's gone up 30 feet into the air. It's 5,000 square feet, being built in their front yard, blocking their original front door. It has multiple entrances, three levels, three kitchens, different entrances for each level. It has two rooftop party decks. It has a full gym above an RV garage. Again, it's 5,000 square feet, 30 feet tall, facing due west while all the homes face due north. And it is clearly intended for rental purposes. How do we know? The owners of the original dwelling have rented out their home for short-term rentals for the last several years. They own seven rental properties throughout the state that they ran out as short-term rentals. Again, this is designed to be used for multiple units. It is essentially an apartment building or a hotel complex that's been built and permitted for a front yard. We've met with the town. We've had numerous conversations with town staff. We had a meeting on November 7th. This structure was initially approved as guest quarters. But under the town's code, it does not meet any of the requirements for guest quarters. Guest quarters must be limited to one single story. It cannot be taller than the original dwelling. It must conform architecturally to the original dwelling. This does not meet any of those requirements. It's 30 feet tall. It towers over the original dwelling and it is not at all architecturally similar. It faces a different direction. It blocks the original home. It's in the front yard. So when we met with staff on November 7th, we were told that that morning, staff changed the designation from guest quarters to a home addition. That is also inappropriate. That is a fiction. Everyone can see this is not a home addition. It's detached. It stands alone. It's over 20 feet from the original dwelling. It violates the single-family residential use of this neighborhood. It will violate single-family zoning. The intent is to rent it out for multiple units in violation of Gilbert zoning ordinances. It also violates the setbacks. It was allowed to be built within 20 feet of the neighbor's front yard instead of the required 40 feet. Those are just a few of the many, many violations that were approved for this dwelling and we again plead with you to please shut it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welker. We have Amy Langdon and following Amy is Nathan Luswer.
Hi, council. Thank you for having us and clearly we are all very frustrated. I too am a neighbor on Melrose. We're here, I'm not going to repeat everything, but I am going to echo off of what Chris said is that there are several easements that have been changed or violated, all the way down to the fact that what it was originally approved as, as guest quarters, then it got changed and it got changed, he's being nice, but it actually got changed in the meeting where the individuals that we're met with said, well, I just changed it right now. We've made several attempts to reach out to do this the right way, to do this civilly, to do this in the interest of what the own town has, this town, our town, has set for legality, for zoning and planning. It's interesting that this is the first meeting because there's two of you who are new and the platforms of less apartments and we're allowing apartments in a residential neighborhood in a front yard. We have, we want to follow zoning rules and planning. Let's make zoning rules and planning a rule and regulation that needs to be followed. It's not being followed. Our own town members are violating that, the people that we're employing. We have, we have people being quoted in the news. Mr. Torgerson, you said, well, we must respect the property rights of those who own zoned land. We must also respect the rights of families that made their foundation there of owning a home and that is what we have. We own homes and it's not safe there. It is a safety issue. We've talked about rentals, we've talked about the things that they've done. I'm going to keep this clean, but I'm talking about sexual nudity in the streets, in the middle of the street, in front of houses. I have a nine-year-old. Do you know how hard it is to teach a then-seven-year-old what all of these things mean? We have examples of armed guards at the door for parties. Who needs an armed guard at the door for parties? What you do inside and what you have, fine, but that's not acceptable. The streets are blocked. We had Ms. West talking about her old parents. These streets are so crowded when they rent this place out, you can't even get, you couldn't even get an ambulance through the neighborhood. History generally repeats itself. A tiger rarely changes its stripes. And so we are asking you to please come out, please see it for yourself. Our attempts to work with you legally have been ignored. We need you to come see it. You need to understand what this is and you need to take a look at the history of what has been approved and the people who are changing it in order to pass it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langdon. Finally, we will have Nathan Luswer.
Hello, Mayor Peterson and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nate Luswer. I live at 2714 East Melrose Street. I'm a fifth generation farmer here in the valley. My dad was raised here. He raised me here. I've raised my family here. I love Gilbert. So I, my front yard is 20 feet from this apartment complex, so it's almost in my front yard. I just wanted to talk about another issue that this thing has created. I echo everything that has been said, but per the permit application the town requires, there are four checkpoints that a applicant must fulfill. The last one is a site grading and drainage plan for the lot, for lots that have on-lot retention, that's us. We haven't had a monsoon season yet with this structure. We've had some light, steady rains and after these rains, it looks as if my front yard has been flood irrigated. It took their front yard, which was a depressed front yard, to now a raised front yard and no retention. So it flows all into my yard. So I, one of the things I've asked the town is, could I please have a drainage and grading plan for 2711? The response I received back was, based on our research, it has been determined that there is no grading and drainage report plan for 2711 East Melrose. That is only one of the problems with this project. I don't know how they were able to receive a permit not checking off this bullet point, but there are many others that they don't check off. There's been some discrepancy in the site, in the setbacks for the facility and with some creative explanations, the town was able to say their front yard is now their side yard, so they're only required 20 feet, which if you follow the town's explanation, it puts the original dwelling in violation of the new setbacks that have been created for this addition. I'm asking for your help. I've never made a complaint in my life about the town of Gilbert. I love it here. I don't feel that a lawsuit is required to help remedy a mistake that was made. I make mistakes all the time. All I can do is help remedy mistakes I've made. I appreciate Councilmember Anderson, he has been on-site. The only responses now that I've received is that the drainage problem is a private matter which was created by the town. So please help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nathan. Appreciate your comments. That's it for the Communications for Citizens. I just wanted to take a moment and thank everyone who took the time out of their busy lives to come down and talk to us about issues that are going to be before us or maybe before us in the near future. As you know, we're not allowed to talk about these issues in this forum because it wasn't agendized. Mayor, at this point, I think I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now move on to the consent calendar and I turn it back over to you, First Night.
Thank you for your patience as I learned my new duties. On the consent agenda, we have two items that we will be pulling from the consent agenda. Item seven, which has been removed from the agenda altogether, so we won't be taking a vote on that item. And item 21, which is the minutes from the last meeting and since not all of our council members were seated at that point, we will do a separate vote for that motion. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve consent items number two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson. Please vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Give me one second.
First Night jitters.
Sean, are you available?
Sean's getting his exercise tonight. I hope you're counting your steps for walk for Maricopa, Sean.
All done, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Vice Mayor, do you want to make a motion on 21?
I will, thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, item 21.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Councilmember Kaprowski, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Kaprowski, please vote. And that motion passes 4-0 with three abstentions from our new council members. Thank you. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Great job. First Night. We will now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard from those in support or in opposition to an item. We have, do we have any slips to speak for public hearing?
No, Mayor, none have been received.
Thank you. So we have one liquor license. I'm sure that everybody wants to discuss the zoning change. So we have one liquor license, we have a property acquisition and we have system development fees audit. Would we like to entertain those in one motion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Move approval.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kropowski, excuse me, Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bonjiani. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. I shut my mic off. Opening, the public hearing on zoning item Z22-13. Conduct a hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code. Is Noah coming up to present? Yes. So we'll have staff presentation on this item. Since this isn't a developer item, it's just town staff, then we'll just have town staff doing a presentation. At that time, I'd like the council members to ask any questions that you might. You've got a full group here to ask questions of before we bring it back to the dais for discussion, but I'll prod you along the way to make it easier.
Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Tilke and Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to present to you regarding the zoning case Z2213, the mixed-use zoning LDC text amendment. This is a case that each of you have been briefed on previously, so I will do my best during the presentation and Samantha Navatney, who is also presenting with me, will do the same to try to tailor the presentation to ways that responds to some of the questions and comments that were brought up since, while giving you a general overview once more of what is specifically being voted on this evening. So first, we want to bring forward the recommended motion for this case for the mixed-use zoning that the Town Council approves Z2213, the text amendment to the chapters that you'll see listed on the screen there in each of their sections, to create three base zoning districts, mixed-use small, mixed-use large, and mixed-use regional, in addition to the creation of a mixed-use development design guidelines booklet that would be approved by the town. Just to give you some background very quickly on the, where this case has been thus far, it's been about, what you're seeing today is almost exactly one year since we started to at least consider bringing a case like this forward. We did everything from a pure communities analysis to places such as Henderson, Nevada, and other communities that are similar to Gilbert in the West to try to understand what they're doing successfully with mixed-use zoning. We went and we worked with many other departments to ultimately begin the work of creating these zoning districts in a way that we believe is tailored well to the town of Gilbert. We have worked closely with planning staff, with members of staff from most town departments who touch the everyday practice of development in the town of Gilbert. We've worked with community partners such as the Chamber of Commerce. We've worked with members of the development community. We've talked to members of the public about this. We have worked with developers themselves and ultimately worked with Planning Commission and now Town Council to work on developing a set of input that we can use to build the best possible mixed-use zoning districts for the town of Gilbert, which is what you're seeing this evening from staff. This is something that was brought up previously to Town Council, but it's worth just briefly revisiting why you're seeing these zoning districts at this exact moment. And we believe that this is addressing four key problems that we're seeing emerging from this current chapter of Gilbert's development history. The first is that there's this interest in mixed-use developments. It's no secret that in Gilbert and around the country, you're seeing more and more proposals for mixed-use developments and you see that in our own office and development services currently. But developers lack the tools to clearly propose them. In addition, the planning staff lack tools to be able to determine where these are best placed within the town of Gilbert, if for certain projects at all, and what is the best design for mixed-use projects. Public officials such as yourselves, council members, lack a clear set of standards and tools by which to measure and propose mixed-use developments for their potential success in the town. And then the current method that we use to approve some of the mixed-use developments that already exist in the town, which are some of the town's most beloved developments, such as, one example would be the early phases of agritopia, they're not developed in a way that is transparent and fair to the public. They use tools such as the planned area development overlay and development agreements, which are not as transparent for the public and makes it harder for them to answer the question of what is being built on the property next to me. A clear set of standards is necessary for the town. In addition, the, this is designed to be a set of land development tools that help us implement the general plan as it was written. It is an explicit short-term implementation goal within the general plan to create mixed-use guidelines that are consistent with the general plan, its principles and action items and design standards that it sets forth. And it also realizes a number of other land use goals in that general plan, which you'll see on the screen to my right. In addition, it provides constructive flexibility for creating mixed-use developments that are unique to individual sites while still upholding the integrity of the general plan in the land development code. Instead of developments coming in and altering the code to work for the development, it is turning this back around the other direction. The land development code in the general plan are now making it clear the kinds of, what is allowed and what is not allowed when it comes to development. And finally, it realizes many goals that we will, that define what we're moving into in Gilbert, this land use 2.0, a new era of development as we transition from what we've seen for the last 40 years, which is kind of building in farm fields, greenfield development into infill developments and the challenges, how we're going to respond to the challenges that come with that. And then just to indicate that the, there's been an analysis done that demonstrates that as written right now, the development outcomes from this amendment are deemed to be consistent with the principles outlined in the general plan and the general plan was a clear guiding document for everything that was done and what you're seeing in the ordinance that's in front of you this evening. I want to, these have been previously discussed in, to each of you, of the council members, but I want to provide a little bit more detail about each of these districts and some of the decisions that were made behind the standards within each district. And I'll start with the mixed-use small. The mixed-use small is a district that is designed to create small-scale mixed-use development for, again, smaller sites, more of a neighborhood scale type of development. It's something that we've seen examples of in the town in the past. There's a couple provisions that I want to highlight to council members as, to provide some clarification. The main one being height. Height has been a hot topic in the, in Town of Gilbert. It's no secret that height is a fundamental concept that affects other properties around a proposed project. And what you'll see in this proposal is that the height for mixed-use small is 45 and looking ahead, you'll see 65 feet for mixed-use large and 85 feet for mixed-use regional. I'll touch on those districts again in a moment. But I want to be clear on why we chose the heights that we did and the different pressures that planning tried to balance in creating those numbers. These numbers are, were a careful balance between where we, as planning staff, were going, which originally the heights were slightly lower than what you see before you, and also what the development community and other members of this outreach process that we've conducted have brought forward, which is they wish to see higher, taller heights, greater flexibility in height. And this is the balance between those different forces. Planning has believed that it's essential to balance how height might affect neighboring properties, especially when we start to think of this as an infill tool. And so these numbers that you see before you reflect a balance between what was suggested and what planning staff believed was appropriate to be able to allow as a maximum height without overwhelming surrounding properties. There's also some other notes that I want to just bring forward to you, just to explain briefly how these numbers were arrived upon. Landscape area was brought to the attention of planning staff about how we ended up with a 20% net a 20% net site area requirement. This is to provide a certain level of flexibility with mixed-use development, especially with smaller sites. You can understand the challenge of providing a number for open space in the way that we do for different zoning districts. When you're dealing with sites that could be half an acre, could be a very small live-work unit, or could be a 10-acre site that has a variety of different buildings on it. 20% open space means very different things on those two sites. So, this is meant to create a number that is kind of, meets in the middle between potential development outcomes, while also still preserving a key provision, which is that the, at least the majority of that space be what we consider usable open space. It is not just a retention basin thrown in on the side as a way to provide open space, but it must be useful and integrated into the development and consistent with the design guidelines that are provided for the mixed-use districts. This is because these mixed-use projects, which are often having different buildings or different uses working together, it's critical that they have open spaces that can connect them well and be useful and mitigate the kind of urban impacts of some of those projects that may be built. So, that was how we arrived at that landscape number. Some of the other provisions that you'll see in these districts are laid out for you in the ordinance as well and have been available for review in the packet. I wanted to point out one more standard before I just walk through, quickly through the rest of the districts, and that is this additional height allowances provision, which you'll see in the additional regulations portion of the new zoning districts. It allows up to, a slight height bonus for developments provided that they meet additional findings of fact. There's been pressure put on planning staff in the past to provide additional height and height incentives and things like that for meeting certain criteria. We wanted to create a small bonus, but only if it met standards that really reflect some of the lessons we've learned from past development practices in the town. That being conformance with a set of design guidelines, clear separation from single-family residential uses, which are the most sensitive uses to the effects of height. They have to have a reason for using this height, and generally, that reason with a mixed-use project is the presence of ground-floor non-residential uses, which require more height on the first floor. So, it has to include that to get that height bonus. And then, there has to be adequate mitigation on the, of the impacts of surrounding properties, which we go into in the design guidelines in detail a little bit more in the code that's set before you. I wanted to provide this just because it is essential that we're clear about how we're approaching height with these projects, in addition to, or I guess, finding a balance between the flexibility that's necessary to be able to encourage good mixed-use projects while also not overwhelming the existing community character of the town and doing infill development well. So, I just wanted to illustrate a little bit of that. I can quickly introduce the rest of the districts to you now. The mixed-use large district is designed to be a mid-sized district for mixed-use development. It is meant to provide kind of medium-density development. It is really a tool that is designed to improve on some, the outcomes of some recent projects that you've seen in the town where you have multiple uses on a site, but may lie in different zoning districts and may be poorly integrated together. This is a tool that has been already illustrated by developers, being potentially very effective at integrating isolated land uses together and creating more cohesive projects. You'll see just from the table before you that it follows the landscape requirements that I mentioned before. There's a minimum site size of five acres to ensure that larger projects are not overwhelming smaller sites. And then, there are things such as an arterial setback, transparency requirements, other regulations that are essential for producing mixed-use development that really works well with its surroundings and creates good cohesive internal sites when you have a site large enough where you're having master site plans and things of that nature. I'll move through this quickly since it's a little bit more technical. Finally, there's the mixed-use regional district, which is the largest district. It's designed for kind of larger campus-style developments, and it is for a very limited set of areas around the town, given that it needs a property size of at least 10 acres. And it is one that is subject to the most stringent development requirements to ensure that the developments that are coming in with that level of intensity are designed appropriately and are managing the impacts on surrounding properties well. But you can only manage the effects on surrounding properties well if we're really thinking carefully about how we're going to place mixed-use developments within the town. And right now, the way that this is done is very difficult. The, currently, we allow loft-above developments, which is commercial on the entire ground floor or another non-residential use, and residential uses on the upper floors. That's allowed in many of our commercial zones. But commercial zones are used all over the town in different contexts, and that provides a very challenging task for planning staff to be able to dictate where good locations are for different mixed-use developments. So, this is designed to place more of that authority back into the hands of council, of Planning Commission, and provide better guidance on where those projects can go. First, I want to note, the first way that that's done is that this is a zoning text amendment. This is not a rezoning of any land. So, that means that a rezoning application is required to use this zone in any capacity. Any mixed-use project that uses these zones, and there's interest in using these zones from a variety of developers, has to come back through council to be rezoned. That means that every project gets evaluated by council to deem, is this a good project for this site and why? We think that's an important element for bringing mixed-use development into the Town of Gilbert in the future. Additionally, it has to meet general plan compatibility. And so, instead of creating a dedicated mixed-use general plan category, which was, is nebulous because you're dealing with projects all the way from the smallest live-work unit or a building, something like what you would see in the Heritage District, campus-style developments, we decided it was best to integrate these districts into general plan categories, which mirror the scale and density of development that's already, that's allowed already in some of these general plan categories. And so, mixed-use small, you'll see primarily in those neighborhood-oriented districts in the general plan, neighborhood commercial, neighborhood office, medium-density residential, as a way to improve some of the development outcomes in some of those areas and to match the densities that you see in those areas. Mixed-use large, you'll see in our, some of our more intense commercial, village center, kind of higher-density residential categories, and the mixed-use regional uses our most intense general plan categories in terms of development. And the reason for that is because we wanted to make sure that anything we allowed in terms of height or density related to mixed-use zones was not going to be a dramatic deviation from what is already allowed to be built in these areas in the general plan. And any zone that's kind of similar in development scale in the existing land development code doesn't have a dramatically different height or allowed density as well. And so, this was us carefully trying to calibrate these three districts into our existing land development code and make it something that can allow mixed-use development, that land use flexibility, without a, upending the way that things have been done in the town already. Again, kind of giving the, giving the town new tools for land use development, which is something that has been a theme of this project since the beginning. I'll have Samantha explain just some more specific provisions of the project, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
So, we covered the districts, but what also is relevant is how these districts fit in with our use table. So, we imagine the three districts fit in right where that red line, that red line is between HVC and NO, neighborhood commercial. So, we really took this task to balance a variety of uses within the project, considering neighboring uses, the scale of the development, and any conflicts with the existing zoning that neighbors against where mixed-use could possibly go. And if you didn't know already, we actually do have three mixed-use type districts, HVC, GVC, and GBC. So, we didn't create any new uses. We didn't recreate the wheel here. We really used those three existing districts as a model, and then sort of pared down what we wanted to see, what uses would, we thought would be appropriate in each of those, our new districts. And then, we also proposed two new limitations, just for consistency, to create a parameter around the user size and then hours of operation. My notes died here. So, this slide broadly covers the modifications to the other part of the LDC to ensure compatibility with the districts that NOAA just covered earlier. And I want to take a moment here to highlight a couple in particular. One of them is signage. So, signage, very important, and there's, there's a lot of new technology out there and can get really creative, and it's important for businesses to identify where their business is. But we want to create cohesion around that in mixed-use developments. So, we're requiring that a comprehensive sign program be required for a mixed-use development. If a site is going to be master-planned, it also makes sense to plan out the signage as well. And, you know, really, this is not a departure from how signage is administered already on master-planned sites. The next one I wanted to point out is, mixed-use districts would not be allowed to be used in the Heritage District overlay, and that's the second line there. We did that for a couple reasons. We didn't want to cause conflict between or undermine the tools already in place for the Heritage District. This includes a lot of great tools available to staff and to the public and council members. So, like the redevelopment plan, the body of redevelopment commission, our design guidelines, these are all tools that, at this time, in creating the mixed-use districts, could come into conflict. Mixed-use zoning really is envisioned to be a tool used for everywhere else in the And the last point that I want to cover is our vertical development overlay districts. The two largest districts, mixed-use large and regional, have a height bonus in the VOD districts, which are areas that already expect and plan for taller buildings. And you can see that in the circled areas on the slide. If a development is interested in height, we wanted to encourage consideration of using the land in the VOD areas, since, again, those areas are already planned for taller buildings. If a tall building is going to go anywhere in the town, it should be in the overlay district that supports that. And what's important here is that the height bonus doesn't go above what already exists and what's already offered in the VOD. And as NOAA pointed earlier, this is a height-sensitive community, and we also are, were sensitive to that in creating this and putting all the documentation together. And lastly, I want to cover our mixed-use definition. So, we currently have a mixed-use development definition. It was created in 2014. That was in line with a policy at the time to encourage multifamily development within regional commercial, the regional commercial zoning district. However, in creating the new proposal from this evening, it seemed that this definition was a little unclear whether residential uses would or wouldn't be required in order to meet that definition. So, we propose an update that's a little more clear and takes sentence structure from organizations that promote best practices in mixed-use development. I also want to note that the definition includes language on creating designs appropriate for the scale of development and its surroundings. And I'll pass back to NOAA to talk about the design guidelines, which will really bring home the vision of, of how we want mixed-use development to look in our community.
Thank you, Samantha. So, I want to address one final piece of this zoning case that is, we believe to be essential to the success of mixed-use districts in the Town of Gilbert, and that is a set of design guidelines. Design, when you're dealing with multiple uses on a single site, is more important than ever. Instead of thinking about simply mitigating the impacts of a single use on other uses around it, now you have to start to consider the relationships between uses, how you're going to not only navigate the potential impacts of uses on one another, but also think about how those uses may benefit one another by being in close proximity to one another, and those benefits can only be realized through good design. And so, the design guidelines were created from a vast source of inspirations from peer communities, from various professional organizations and their best practices, such as the American Planning Association, the Congress for the New Urbanism, and the Urban Land Institute, who directly had feedback into this project. Feedback, but also feedback from community developers and partners about what works and what doesn't in the development community for securing good design, and also examples from past Gilbert developments, both really strong examples and places where we believe that there could have been improvements made had we used different tools to implement those plans. And so, ultimately, these design guidelines, which are included in the packet that's been presented to you, try to create a set of guidelines that can ensure development, that can move especially pedestrians between uses on a single site without a vehicle, can increase the number of public and semi-public spaces that really make a development viable and interesting to those, even outside of that development, and create quality open space that mitigates the impacts of larger developments, and ultimately, create dynamic relationships between uses and allow for greater economic performance of those sites. It's been shown in studies that mixed-use projects can often have a longer design life, design viability than other projects, and so, this is designed to try to capture those benefits that have been seen over a long period of time with some mixed-use projects in other communities that have been around for a long time. These design guidelines apply to the three districts that are presented before you, MUS, MUL, and MUR, but also the loft-above projects that I mentioned earlier, as a way to try to also bring them in, because they are technically mixed-use buildings, bring them into some of the design benefits that we see from these design guidelines being implemented for them. They currently aren't subject to any design guidelines. Our commercial design guidelines don't really do anything to capture those projects because they are a little bit more of a newer design trend than when those were written in, I believe, 2000. And those are allowed in the districts that you see before you. So, those kinds of projects would be subject to these design guidelines unless there was another set that superseded them, such as the gateway area, you know, character standards or things like that. So, that is all detailed in the ordinance that is provided before you. So, I went over this briefly to start, but I want to just be very clear that this was not created in a vacuum. This was created by consulting a wide variety of entities who I've listed here, who all had direct input into the things that will work in this project, that they believe are going to be really successful, and the things that we need to change. And what I did for the two slides here was just provide every piece of feedback from these agencies and departments that was integrated directly into the ordinance that you see before you sometime between September of '22 and today. And so, you'll see that it was not a small number of comments, and some of these, which get into everything from accessory structure administration to, you know, the flexibility of residential requirements, self-parking for residential, in addressing specific types of uses in the design guidelines. These are all different pieces of feedback that were written into the attachments that you now see before you. You will also see some of the feedback that was provided by Planning Commission with their vote on November 2nd, and also from their study session prior to that, and then also some of the key highlights from the developer and community partner outreach that we had. So, as you can see, this is really designed with a wide range of partners who we work with every day in Development Services and who would be intimately involved in the implementation of projects using this zoning, these zoning districts going forward. And so, this gives us a certain degree of confidence in coming before you with a, with a project that's been well-vetted. So, in conclusion, I want to end with two statements that are used from the text of our design guidelines, that really capture the key outcomes that we want to create from promoting mixed-use zoning in the Town of Gilbert as a tool for planning and other development services going forward. And the first is creating development greater than the sum of its parts. It's what I've been saying throughout the presentation, of trying to think about, if we're going to allow multiple uses on a single site to try to promote a higher quality of infill development and, you know, better projects for mixed-use development going forward, how can we do that in a way where we're actually not only just getting the benefit of having the uses in the Town of Gilbert, but actually then creating projects that are inviting and allow those uses to work together well with their surroundings and with uses on that individual site? This is possible and can be done in ways that are really well-tailored to the suburban environments of Gilbert. And finally, the goal of this, of this project was to try to create a tool that increased developer flexibility for mixed-use zoning, because as I said right now, there's very few tools, and the tools we do have are pretty difficult and inefficient to administer, while providing greater town control over mixed-use site placement and design. It is about, again, kind of turning that script It is about, again, kind of turning that script over where the town is now writing prescriptive tools that we can use to determine if we're going to see mixed-use development for the foreseeable future, how are we going to design those mixed-use sites? Where are they going to go to maximize the benefit that they have for the people of the Town of Gilbert? And with that, we'd like to bring forward the recommendation to, a recommended motion to approve Z-2213, the mixed-use zoning standards for three mixed-use districts, mixed-use small, mixed-use large, mixed-use regional, and the mixed-use development design guidelines that accompany these districts and a variety of other mixed-use projects in the town. Thank you for your time, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Tilke, and Town Council.
Noah, if I could just bottle your enthusiasm for energy. You're fun to watch. Thank you for that. Thank you, Samantha, for standing beside him. It's, that was a lot to present. You did it very efficiently and effectively, I believe. Any questions from council members? I'm going to look down the line. Do you have any questions for the staff at this point? Yes.
On the mixed-use large...
Council member, can you pull your mic a little closer or sit closer? Thank you.
There we go. Is that better, hopefully? On the mixed-use large, what type of development? And I know, I'm sure you probably said the height, but you did have a lot of enthusiasm going through there. But what is the maximum height? And what, are these going to be hotels? Is this that, I mean, more, there'd be more than just hotels, but will these be high, big, high-rise apartment buildings? What is included in that?
Council member Buckley, I do apologize. Thank, that's a really good question and a really important one to ask. And I'll go back to the mixed-use large standards to answer a couple components of your question there. So the first was the height question. So the maximum height that would be allowed would be, for the vast majority of projects, again, barring some of the very specific other examples, such as the vertical development overlay districts, it would be 65 feet, which is slight, ever so slightly taller than what we currently allow in most of our commercial zoning districts, such as general commercial, for example. You mentioned the hotel projects, and hotels very well could be a component of one. There's a project that is on the, near the Santan Village Mall. It is called the North Side at Santan Village. That includes a 54-foot-tall hotel, I believe. That's in the regional commercial zone right now. That would be a hotel and a retail center that are integrated together. That could be an example of a project that might use the mixed-use large districts. I think a great example to consider would be the Gilmore, which was recently approved in a zoning case by Town Council. There's actually a very small picture of it in the top-right corner there. It's a little bit taller. I think it's just a tiny bit taller than what you might be allowed to build in this zone, but it, the concept of the project is there. So you would have, for example, you see the kind of loft-above units there. There's also more commercial dedicated areas that are part of that development in a variety of buildings that both include residential and don't include residential. The issue we had with that site was how to integrate all of those uses together effectively in a way that was really attractive. And so this is designed to maybe take some of the developments such as that and continue to think about how we can evolve some of the site planning on those sites to make those uses integrate together a little bit better. Something like just a hotel on its own or just a multifamily building on its own are actually the things we want to avoid with this. We don't want to create sites with this district that just have single uses, all kind of dotting a site that don't talk to one another. And so there are provisions in the code that are explicitly meant to ensure that people are actually using this as a mixed-use code, not just, say, as you mentioned, build a hotel here, build a multifamily project here.
Right.
Yeah, so in trying to improve on some of those single-use sites there.
So out of all three of these, is 65 feet, that's, like you said, about what we have right now? Is that the highest that, without asking for a height increase? What is the highest someone can come in and be conformative with the height that they want to do a project?
Right. So for the, the mixed-use small would be 45. For the mixed-use large, as you mentioned, it would be 65 feet. You cannot go, you cannot go higher unless you were to do the request that I mentioned here, where you could add one, about one story of additional height, provided you meet all of the standards that are there, that include increased setbacks, that include not being adjacent to single-family residential, protections on surrounding properties, things like that. And then the mixed-use regional would have an 85-foot height limit. And all of those heights, again, are designed to try to just manage the fact that when you deal with mixed-use development with different uses other than residential, you generally have taller floor heights. And so you have to be sensitive to how height might change slightly from, say, our existing commercial, single-use districts, to make sure that those different uses can all fit together and fit within a height that's realistic for some of the types of projects that you're seeing coming forward.
So you said there's, it's 85 feet is the highest? Or 65? I...
I apologize. These are two separate zoning districts that are allowed in two different types of general plan categories. So the, again, the mixed-use large is 65 feet, and if you are rezoning to mixed-use large, you cannot go higher than that, again. Or it's 85 feet if it's a mixed-use regional rezoning. Those are two different zoning districts. They would be considered completely differently from one another.
Okay. Well, I guess to put my question a little bit better, what is the highest building Gilbert can build to be conformative?
Yes.
Is that the 85 feet?
The, so this would not be the tallest that can be built in the Town of Gilbert. It would be, for base zoning, it would be, I believe, pretty close to tied for tallest. It would be, it wouldn't be completely unprecedented. The tallest building that can be built in Gilbert is in one of our VDOD areas, which you saw mapped earlier. There are buildings that can go up to 150 feet with a development bonus there, but that's very rare and has to use a development bonus matrix with the town that I don't believe any development has ever used. For the mixed-use districts that you see before you, the absolute highest it could go, and that's being in the correct vertical development overlay district, with all of the design guidelines and all of the standards met, is 105 feet. It could not go higher than that under any circumstance, and that's only in about 0.5% of the town's land area.
Okay. And that's what we're voting on right now? Adding these?
Right.
Okay.
There's, what I pointed out is just in the blue area there, it, there are specific sites that are greater than 10 acres, and that area would be allowed to use that max height up to, I think it was 105. That's the only, those are the only sites that could use that.
I'm going to, can I interject for a second?
Sure.
We are not voting to increase that 105 feet tonight. That's part of the vertical development overlay district. That could be done automatically without the zoning code change that we're doing tonight, correct?
Correct. There are many developments that could already use that height in those vertical development overlay districts. We did not want to increase the heights that are allowed in any of those districts with mixed-use zoning.
I didn't want the council member to be confused that we were actually voting to allow up to 105. That's already allowed. 105 feet is already allowed in a certain location with certain conditions, so that we're just talking about the three different changes potentially to the code this evening.
Right. Thank you. All right. You answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Council member Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm a strong supporter of mixed-use and applaud you and your team for the hard work you did to put this whole thing together. Couple of questions. Being 23, or I'm sorry, being 13 days old and being fed through a fire hose, my knowledge of zoning is probably the smallest compared to all my colleagues here. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and hopefully they won't be too amateurish, okay? What did you mean by, on your presentation, you said amend parking standards to provide shared parking strategy?
Council member Bonjivani, I'll move to the slide that discussed that. The amend parking standards to provide shared parking strategy. So right now, what we have in the code is an allowance for certain developments to use shared parking, provided that they come forward and get an administrative use permit and demonstrate that different uses on the site are supportive of allowing shared parking. Hours are different. They allow you to use the same parking spaces for different uses because their hours of operation and their peak hours of traffic don't intersect with one another. What that means there, and perhaps I didn't make it entirely clear, is it allows, what we're looking at is that we have a parking study that is in progress right now, that is evaluating our use, our parking uses that are in our code, the uses that we use to regulate parking, and the ratios associated with those parking, as well as our administrative procedures. That includes shared parking. And so we instructed our consultant that we're working with to provide some guidance on the best practices for especially suburban communities such as Gilbert to have easier-to-administer shared parking standards for mixed-use projects. And so that's what that means when you see the note on the screen, "to be amended with completion of parking study ongoing." What that reflects is the fact that we're looking to have these districts be potentially integrated into that parking study to make sure that when we're thinking about shared parking with uses that are close to one another, we're doing it in a way that's responsible and allows for those different spaces to be shared without underparking some of these sites, because that can be a challenge with mixed-use sites is underparking. So we're trying to get out ahead of that and address that.
So does the number of parking spaces affect the number of dwellings per acre?
Council member, could you repeat the question?
Yeah. Does the number of parking spaces available affect the number of dwellings a developer can, can you, or can put up per acre?
Sure. Development Director Kyle is, has a, has a story and an example of this that I think is worth sharing.
Mayor Peterson, Council member Bonjivani. To go back to the first question about the shared use, just kind of an example of what that would be, a lot of times if there's a office use and a retail use together, maybe that person is driving into the office and they're going to park and go to their office, but they're also going to go to the retail center and get a cup of coffee or have lunch or whatever. So we don't necessarily need to double up on all those different parking spaces and create a sea of asphalt if we know that there's a parking arrangement in place. And so this allows us to kind of go into that shared parking and really make a difference in how we're parking things. To your second question, it's actually just, I think, the opposite. So the number of dwelling units drives the amount of parking spaces. So I'll get the numbers wrong, but let's say it's a one-bedroom apartment, you've got to have two parking spaces, a two-bedroom apartment. So it's, it's, the parking is driven by the density. And I guess you could flip it, but that's how that is kind of calculated as well.
Okay. So with that said, will you allow underground parking in any of these?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mayor Peterson, Council member Bonjivani. Yes, absolutely. One of the projects we have coming forward now at Ray and Higley actually has underground parking as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great question. We have a couple of projects in Gilbert, or one that I can name in Gilbert at Valveston Williamsville that has underground parking. Oh, two, up at Juniper in Gilbert, is that considered underground? Great question. Any other questions at this time for staff? Council member Torgason.
Your office will have underground parking. What was meant by self-park?
Mayor Peterson, Council member Torgason. What's meant by self-park is that the residential use has some sort of secured parking or some sort of separate parking that is dedicated to the residential use. It ensures that if someone lives in that building, for example, or in that set of homes, that there are parking spaces always dedicated to those residents. That would mean that we generally want to make sure that before we even consider shared parking, that we are, those residential uses have the appropriate number of spaces on their own, so that there aren't worst-case scenarios occurring with parking for residents.
And something that your comment there suggests a question I had. When you said homes rather than apartments, is this something that could also be for smaller homes, entry-level homes, or any home, actually? Fee simple homes, as well as, let's say, a small commercial use in the center of it?
Mayor Peterson, Council member Torgason, probably not, because the density is a little bit higher. So I don't know that you would hit some of those density levels with single-family homes or smaller homes like that. This is meant to be more of a mixed-use, kind of a stack project. If it came in at that density level, it's something that could potentially happen, but I think it'd be a little bit of a stretch to get there.
Thank you.
If I'm wrong.
We still allow horizontal mixed-use, but it's okay.
Other questions for staff at this time? Council member Anderson.
I was happy to hear during your discussion about the design guidelines that we included the police department, because I think the design of open spaces in this, these zoning categories, it's important that they be safe spaces, too. And I know they're very well-versed in ways to design those open spaces so that they are safe spaces, so I'm glad to see that. I'm going to ask Kyle. Samantha mentioned signs, and Kyle knows how much I love signs. And it talks about in the, in the new districts, more complex signage policies. Are A-frames complex signs?
Mayor Peterson, Council member Anderson, I wouldn't say that A-frames are complex signs. A-frames are temporary signs that are allowed to be placed in the community. The complex signs would be more of the wayfinding and the street signs inside of a development.
I'm just concerned that, given the densities, we're going to have both businesses and residential, that there's the possibility for a lot of A-frame signs going up, which reminds me that I'm still owed another report either from Sarah or you on, I think, on A-frames and how it's been accepted in the community, the business community still sees them as important drivers of their business. I don't know, Sarah, is that something? Don't, you don't need to come up. It's okay. I'll talk to her later.
Mayor Peterson, Council member Anderson, well, Sarah and I will work together on getting that information to you.
Thank you.
He always has to bring up A-frame signs. Questions? Council member Kaprowski, Vice Mayor? No? I have a couple. So you did mention that this would not be allowed in the HVC zoning, but you also mentioned, I believe, that I caught, that it would be allowed in the GVC zoning. Is that correct?
Mayor Peterson, Council, to some degree, there, that addresses a slightly, a slightly separate provision. So for the HVC, the Heritage District, yes, we determined that it was best that we don't immediately include the mixed-use districts in the Heritage District, because the HVC zoning tool was explicitly designed to carry out the redevelopment plan and the design guidelines for the, for the Heritage District. And so in that area, we would want the input of Redevelopment Commission about how they might want to handle this and how it may affect the redevelopment plan, to review that, work with OED and some of the other departments involved specifically with the Heritage District, to make sure that those, those mixed-use zones work for that vision. But that was a, something we wanted to leave to the discretion of the input of that body as well. As for...
The current zoning allows for mixed-use in the Heritage District.
Right. In addition, the, Mayor Peterson, the HVC zoning allows for mixed-use development as well. What you saw with the GVC and GBC is simply that when we have a mixed-use building or a mixed-use project that is allowed currently in those zones, which are in a certain area of the town, they also have to be responded to the site and the building design guidelines here. The zoning itself can be used in that area as well and would be compliant to those design guidelines. But as for GVC and GBC, those are, those also, for those loft-above projects, would have to comply with the design guidelines. We could use those as a tool for promoting better design on those projects as well.
Okay. And for the MUR, you talked about it would automatically allow 85 feet, I think. And since it is already in the VDOD, what is allowed automatically in the VDOD? Is it 65, 75? I can't remember.
Mayor, Mayor Peterson and Council, that depends on the base zoning district. The base zoning right now ranges from usually about 75 to 105 feet, which you could get by right. And then by participating with the town in the development bonus matrix that's included in the land development code, you could reach as high as 150 feet for, I believe it's regional commercial in areas one and five, but I don't, I would have to review the code again. I don't remember off the top of my head. So that's how the VDOD is administered.
And those would be obviously right along the freeway in a spot that would really handle something like that, not right up against single-family residential or anything. I was just concerned with the 85 feet, but it sounds like it really does fit the code that we already have in place, so I don't have an issue with that. And it was, I thought it was interesting that you talked about the PAD process and how this makes it more... how this makes it more visible, if you will, to the public, because we really, when I came on the planning commission, I think we did PADs like almost every project, and then we really stopped doing PADs, and we only do them very infrequently now, really, I think. And so it was interesting to hear your evaluation of that and how you think this will bring it more to the public and they'll have more input, and they'll understand what the project's going to contain versus a PAD that we could shove a whole bunch of different things into a project and it wouldn't be as clear. That was my technical term, shove stuff into the project. So I appreciate that you pointed that out. And does Samantha have a comment on that?
Yeah, I did have a comment. I'm glad you brought that up. Mayor Peterson, I wanted to point out that in our pre-research, we actually pulled a few old PADs and used those numbers in drafting the outline at first. We really relied on previous staff history and experience in addition to projects that have been approved, what's worked in the town, and, and how can we inform what we're creating here.
That's great, I love it. I love how you're looking at all of these different definitions and designs and guidelines. And I think, I think I was on that 2014 multi-family steering committee, were you on that 2014? I know I was with Joan Kruger anyway. I was on that 2014 multi-family steering committee that you're talking about, the definition and everything that came out of there. So it, it's interesting to see how it's moving forward and changing as the community is changing and bringing different options to us. So I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the work that has gone into this and the different things that you're pointing out to us, things that I don't think I've thought about for a while. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Because once I close the staff comments, we'll be bringing it back to the dais for discussion. Last call. Okay, thank you, team. Appreciate you. I will, somebody shut my mic off. I will bring it back to the dais now for discussion. And any comments from anyone? Okay, to go. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
First, I just want to congratulate the, the team. This has been a long project, and quite frankly, I think we were talking about this 20 years ago and we were ahead of our time. And we weren't quite sure what this could look like, because the market wasn't there. And when I read through it, I would say that the residents and businesses of Gilbert should feel comfortable that with these guidelines, we are asking for a lot for them to come in and ask for a mixed-use project. So it, I believe that by providing the guidelines that we have, it provides those developers who want to invest in our community to understand the standards that we have an expectation for. And of course, those guidelines provide flexibility, which is important, because not all, not every project's gonna fit in a box. And so we've put a lot out there that, we've spent a lot of time looking at the past, as you said, best practices, and it shows in this document. And so I feel very comfortable with this. I appreciate how many years it's taken to get here, and here we are, and I will be in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I think I need to close the public hearing. I don't have my cheat sheet up here for public hearings, so I think I need to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion. Any other comments? Councilmember Anderson?
I feel the same way that Vice Mayor Tilke feels about this, but it has been a long time coming. I, unfortunately, I can remember 20 years ago talking about it. But I think for our City of the Future initiative, it's, this is, this is a great example of how we can address much of what is in that initiative when it comes to the quality of life here in Gilbert. We've talked about implementing a property maintenance code, which will certainly go a long ways in addressing some of the issues of cities as they mature. But I think design guidelines and very specific guidelines, along with zoning districts such as this, will do the same thing as that maintenance code may do, is we have certain standards that we will ask for in Gilbert, and they're outlined and very specific and very clear. So thank you for the, for the, the work that you've done on this. Have they, have they presented before? Didn't, didn't you get a new word to say?
Noah has, no, no, that's usually directors, Councilmember September, I mean, Anderson.
Oh, okay.
Wow. It's usually directors or that they have a secret word that they have to work into their presentation when they come present for the first time. Noah has presented to us. Samantha, have you presented to us?
I don't think Samantha has.
No, this was your first time.
Okay.
Thank you.
You did an excellent job, thank you very much.
The words have been quite interesting over the years.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Torgerson?
No, I just wanted to remark again, Noah, I want you on the QVC channel.
Sell and stop.
Yeah, just sell away, my friend, sell away. Actually, I, I do appreciate the work in there, and I know Kyle's got extra gray hair over it, so that's good. But I'm very, I read through the packet and I had asked Kyle earlier and figured the answer later, but I like what it is. I like the fact that Scott's pushing against A-frame signs, because somebody will probably buy more from me and I'll make more money. And then I just wanted to say I appreciate that, and thanks for getting back to me, Kyle.
And I will, I will echo everything that's been said. I, I do support this. Again, I thank you for the work that has gone into this. I also want to point out that the Chamber of Commerce and, and Sarah Watts is here this evening, submitted a letter to us supporting this, their public policy looked, I know you presented to them, and their public policy sent us a letter to recommend approval of this too. So that's always great that we can hear from our business community, whether they like A-frame signs or not. Councilmember Anderson? And I would be happy to accept a motion on this if someone would like to attempt to do so.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 23 zoning Z 2213.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Way to go, team. Great work. Thanks for all that discussion this evening. And Noah, again, I'm gonna bottle your enthusiasm. Now we'll move on to, it kinda reminded me of Ken Snow a little bit. Now we'll move on to administrative items. We, right? Do you see it? We have reports from boards and commissions and committees. Does anyone have anything to report this evening? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention that we are, Communication Subcommittee has met twice, and since we aren't allowed to talk to you all about anything, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates that we are working with the Town Clerk's Office at this point to review and update our request-to-speak cards, so it'll be easier for the public to understand how to use those. And also working with both the Town Clerk and digital team to produce a video outlining public input processes that we can use not only here but online. And so I just wanted to let you know that, that's in the progress, and you'll be seeing that more, but just an update on that. And while I haven't attended the first meeting for the MAG Domestic Violence Council, I got an email that noted that February is teen violence prevention month, where they are featuring webinar series every week. And if you're interested, I, it, it had information not only for your teen, but as a parent, how you can talk to your teen and things that you can be looking for. And I believe you can sign up online through azmag.gov, but I thought some people may have an interest in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other reports from anyone? Now we will move to Communications. Report from the Town Manager on Current Events. Look at me, looking to the left, right at you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, can you guys hear me okay? Okay. First, I got a question for Noah. Did Kyle really force you to call him Director Kyle, Noah? Because I can follow up with him on that. No idea what to call him. Nice, nice work. Okay, couple items for you, Mayor. I've got two happy but sad announcement about some very longtime employees who will be leaving us soon. To start, we have a senior water distribution utility technician, Susan Logan, who is celebrating her retirement on February 1st after over 22 years of service in Gilbert. Susan started out her career in Gilbert in the water metering department before promoting to the water distribution department as a utility worker. She served for nearly 20 years and was promoted into the senior role in 2015. In her years of service, Susan has demonstrated her drive and dedication to the team, and has been awarded 37 on-the-spot awards for taking initiative, improving process, working on special projects, and supporting coworkers. Her performance and enthusiasm led her to being selected as the 2007 Employee of the Year. Susan has gone above and beyond as a mentor and leader and coached her team in the AZ Water Hydrant Hysteria Competition, earning second place in the statewide event in both 2019 and 2022. Susan's dedication to our team and to the water industry will leave a lasting legacy that we'll be forever grateful for and which we are exceptionally proud of, and wish Susan all the best in her retirement and future endeavors. Next, and, and this is a name and a face that I'll bet many of you know, after 27 years, Jody Becker, in our Parks Department, one of our beloved Park Ranger and a Park Ranger Supervisor at that, she retired on January 11th. Jody has been an employee with Gilbert Parks and Recreation since 2000, or January 1996, and has been instrumental in the development of the Gilbert Park Rangers. This team started with two non-uniformed caretakers that would assist with the maintenance duties at Gilbert Parks. Today, the team is fully uniformed and works closely with facilities, maintenance, and the Gilbert Police Department. Jody was highlighted in the July 2020 issue of Parks and Recreation Magazine, distributed by the National Recreation and Parks, Parks Association, and she was also a Gilbert MVP for Innovation winner in 2014. And we will miss Jody greatly. We do have something special we're gonna do for them, we're gonna put some A-frame signs out in front of Town Hall, thanking them for their years of service as a, as a special way to commemorate. But both sides of the A-frame, yes. And then lastly, I wanted to thank the Gilbert staff and volunteers that participated in the regional point-in-time count that is done annually. It was a very cold morning, and they go, this is part of an effort to get a handle on the size of the population in this region of people that are experiencing homelessness. Melanie Dykstra, Dykstra has been doing it ever since I've been here, and Melanie helped lead that team for us this morning. So very appreciative of what she does for us and all the people who showed up on a cold morning to do that. Thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that, Patrick. Next, report from Council on Current Events. Councilmember Anderson?
I just realized, as you were doing those recognitions at the beginning of the meeting, there's one other person that we ought to recognize, who is also a graduate from Perry High School, the starting quarterback of Patrick's favorite team, the 49ers. Rock Purdy is a Perry High School graduate. Yeah, he plays this week.
Yeah, that's great. We have some great talent coming out of Gilbert. Any other? Yes, Councilmember Kaprowski?
Good evening. Being from an Asian cultural background, I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy Lunar New Year that began on Sunday, the 22nd. May your year of the rabbit be full of happiness, prosperity, and health, and I hope you enjoy some of the regional events that are happening around the area in celebration of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaprowski. Any other comments from, report from council?
Well, I did my report at the beginning of the meeting, so we are done. I will recess the regular meeting, and we will be moving upstairs to reconvene in executive session.